Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Douglas Planning Board Meeting for February 11th, 2020. The meeting is being recorded and available for viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on our website. And we're going to start at seven oh two. And first item on the agenda is discussion side residential overlay.
So at the last meeting, the board asked that we have town council take a stab at drafting something, so that's in the packet. The board also asked that the building commissioner come in and speak to the board about a proposal. And so I shared this with Mark. And the reason we have it first, even though we have a seven o'clock public hearing is because the board wanted Mark's input. So we figured get him in, get him out. So I think just get over to Mark.
Yeah, you want to roll? You want to pull up a chair?
Guys and gals, I can stand up if you want. So first of all, you know, the last time I was here, I'm against this because it's just going to complicate matters up there, I think. It's going to turn into the Wild West. I mean, a 5,000 square foot lot is not buildable, no matter what you do with it. I don't care what anyone says. But if you are going to, my input to this is that the lawyer drafted this stuff up. I think it needs to have a structure on it, habitable structure with an occupancy, not allow any of the non-grandfathered lots to now become grandfathered. Because it's going to be chaos. So we got to, I think you should strike that from there.
Which one was that, 3C or something?
Well, it gets into 3A, should be a pre-existing structure involved in it. And then 4A, yep, get rid of that. And then 3C too. The construction of a new single-family home. Think you alter, modify, replace, replace something that was there?
Yeah, replace all tomorrow.
And as far as the setbacks and stuff and the heights, I would stick with the 15. That's a 15 side setback and rear. And rear. I mean, that's as small as we go in our zoning currently.
Yeah. I think, I think that we were initially, early on, we were talking like 10 feet because the ZBA has been approving 10 feet on the sides with their decisions and stuff like that. But I think 12 is what we were like, well, let's just split the difference. So we went up with 12.
Well, that's up to you to.
And then, yeah, just some feedback or something. You know, and then I think 25 feet from the front.
Did you recommend getting rid of 3A also?
I think we gotta review it. And this is the first time we saw the right.
3C, I think it was.
Which ones, Mark? Were you suggesting getting rid of them?
3A, 3C.
3C adding to 3A saying has a pre-existing habitable structure with, I would say with an occupancy too. I mean, there's abandoned places and.
Well, you grandfathered if you got a pre-existing structure there.
Only, only for so many years.
Only for so long, yeah. And then 4A.
Yeah, this is the first time we started this project.
Will you recommend staying with 15 feet for setbacks?
I, that's, I mean, that's what I recommend, but. And as far as accessory building height?
Yeah, it's current zoning.
12 feet, 12 feet is fine. And oh, there's, he has 15 feet here, but then 12 feet in there. So I don't think you want a 15-foot tall shaft.
No.
Yeah, but accessory structure could also be a garage, semi-barage. So that's why I did 15 feet.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe just.
Yeah, 15 worked. That's why I did a little.
Just a little storage if I'm not habitable.
I did a little, I did a little sketch, just a standard little car garage.
Yeah. Do you have a sketch with a house and a garage on a 5,000 square foot lot?
Well, no. See, this is a separate addressing, accessory structure, just to address it. I'm agreeing, you're not even going to get by, you know, and where are you going to put it? You can't put it in the front yard.
So at the end of it, my thoughts is that the way we do it now, we deal with it on a case-by-case basis with his ZBA is the best way to deal with that.
I think you're right. I mean, generally.
I mean, this is just opening up a can of worms. That's my opinion. It's one man's opinion. That's what you want. Was there anything else you wanted?
Anything else you remember?
No. I think, you know, we talked about the 30% lot coverage. Aaron came up with 30. I ran that by Mark. Mark, you, that's common to what you're used to.
Yeah, there should be some kind of lot coverage. I mean, obviously, when we talk, if you have town water and sewer, you can have more lot coverage, but we don't.
Right. I mean, just simply if you have a lot, even if it was 30%, it doesn't matter because you're not going to build a house. It's a, you know, 40,000 square foot, you know, footprint. So, you know, something that dictates that. I was just, what I was involved with, just doing what if, I was asked to do something. And that's why I did some sketches and looked at some, you know, potential dimensional requirements.
You got serious lot issues up there too. They're putting, I mean, I'm dealing with one right now. They're putting a new house in up there right now, and I've already got complaints. Two weeks later, our foundation goes in of the two lots next to them getting bombarded with water, saying water's traveling underneath their house as well. We don't do stormwater management here in town, so.
I mean, do we have a bylaw that says that no water, I mean, obviously, it's going to be somewhere, regular bylaws that you can't put water from one property.
No, you can't dump water on another.
Of course not. That's just common.
It's common. And then I don't know if you saw the notes from our last meeting, we talked about, you know, no additional lots to be created. We were talking about the decks.
Yeah, that's why I was surprised it was there, that you can build a new house on a lot.
We, this is the first time Jay, I don't know if Jay took our notes back or what.
Those were originating from his list, and then it got dropped in the bylaw.
Because I know our conference call with town council, me and Bill specifically said, only with pre-existing structures on.
Yeah.
Because if you want to give relief to people, I mean, you don't want to give relief to build new houses.
X name that word.
Anything for Mark? This is the first time we're seeing him. Okay.
So we're not moving to make any revisions or.
We're going to go to our public hearing. We can bring this back up for discussion after.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
So we're not moving to revise our existing zoning bylaw for non-governing structures? We've decided to go this route, right?
We haven't decided to go any route yet. We're still in discussion.
Well, the way it was left, you, you were going to draft something, I think.
Yeah, you weren't at the last meeting. We didn't see anything from you on that because you were going to draft something for us. That's right.
I said, as of right.
Yeah, okay. Well, we will bring it back up for discussion. We're going to discuss this more after we do our public hearing. It's not done for the night.
Thank you, Mark.
Anybody else have anything for Mark? No? Okay, thank you, Mark, for coming in. Appreciate your.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, we ready for our public hearing?
Yeah.
We can still meet.
I didn't even know where that came from.
We can say beautiful. Say beautiful.
Glory language.
All right, ready folks?
Yes.
All right, this is the end of the public hearing. J E H Real Estate Investment Company, LLC, application for site plan review on 40 Depot Street, possible vote. All right, I'll read this. In accordance with the Town of Douglas zoning bylaws, section 9.4, site plan review. Douglas Planning Board is holding a public hearing on the application of J E H Real Estate Investment Company, LLC, to renovate a multistructure of more than 500 square feet, expansion of a parking lot for a multifamily structure along with grading and clearing of more than 10% of the lot. Prior to a fire, the multifamily structure contained a lot, a total of seven apartments and 15 bedrooms. The applicant proposes to renovate the structure to include eight apartments and 16 bedrooms. The proposed site is located at 40 Depot Street, map 169, parcel 35, as shown on a plan prepared for J E H Real Estate Investment Company, LLC, owners entitled Site Plan Review, Site Plan for 40 Depot Street, by Allen Engineering and Associates, 1 Charles Drew Road, Suite 2, Hopeville, Mass., dated January 14th, 2020. Public hearing is being held on Tuesday, February 11th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the community meeting room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Copy of the plan may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Ernest March, Chairman, Douglas Planning Board. Public hearing is now open.
This is the burn though. So they want to change from. Essentially, the bedrooms are the same.
40 Depot Street exists, it's sitting here right now. So what are they going to go for?
All right, let's look. Good evening all. My name is Michael Dryden. I'm a senior project manager with Allen Engineering. The public hearing notice was pretty descriptive. I'm not sure I have a presentation to make after that.
Oh, you're all set.
I will be very brief. I'd like to just give you an overview of existing conditions and of course, the proposed site plan. Is everybody generally familiar with the site right down the street? Just sort of some of the vitals here. North is straight up, shown here at a scale of one inch equals 20. The lot itself is outlined in bold black. It's just over three quarters of an acre in size. It's within the Village Residential District. Obviously, it has frontage on both Depot Street as well as Martin Road. Access to the property, however vehicular access, is from Depot Street via dedicated ingress and egress drives. There's currently no formal paved access on Martin Road, although there is, not depicted properly here, there's a break in the stone wall of its location. So there is the ability to access the site from Martin Road. Currently, there's an existing building on the site and there's certainly some history associated with this site. The original construction was 1850, I believe. By the way, Gary Moyer is also here, as well as Jim Hasty. I failed to introduce both of you.
Who are they? Who are they? As far as what they're.
Gary is the architect, Gary Moyer Architects, and Jim is the owner applicant. So again, 1850 original construction, and I believe it was March of 2019, there was a fire at the building and the rear portion was damaged. So prior to that fire, there were three apartment units in the, in the front portion of the building, the three-story portion, another four apartment units in the back portion. The rear portion, again, sustained some damage. The front did sustain some damage, but is salvageable. What is there today is the front portion at this dash line. The rear portion has been demolished. So essentially, we have a site that's ready for construction. Obviously, we need to go through this approval. In just last month, the ZBA issued a special permit for relief on this site to allow for three things, essentially the renovation of that front portion of the building, three units, and to replace the four units that were in the rear portion with five units. So now we're talking about a total of eight departments and a total of 16 bedrooms. So one, one additional unit and one additional bedroom as compared to prior to the fire.
We have parking bylaws. Just, you obviously have plenty of parking for moving to that.
I'll turn it over to the proposed site plan unless there are questions about what's there today.
Yeah.
Pretty straightforward. You do?
I drove by there today in case the front building there, 40 Depot, is visible from Depot.
Certainly.
All right. But it looked like all the stuff on the right has already been, some of that has already been torn down or destroyed by fire or something.
From this dash line to the rear has been raised.
So nothing other than the front part of that?
The original house.
Original house is there.
The square portion in the front stands today in essentially its original condition. Yeah, we do have some photos of the existing building.
Are you fully sprinkling shaft wall? What are you doing between the two spaces?
Fully sprinkling.
The easiest way to do it because it's vertical and horizontal.
Same scale and orientation. This is the proposed site plan layout materials. So again, the existing portion here, their stairway connector, and Gary, you can certainly talk more about this as needed. But the five new units are depicted in the back. They essentially stepped nine inches in elevation to respond to the existing topography on the site. We are maintaining the two access points, but the southernmost access here is being widened. If you're familiar with it, it's very narrow today. So we want to have a little bit more maneuverability. So we're widening that to a minimum of 22 feet. Again, we talked a little bit about parking, but two spaces per unit, your bylaw requires one. We think from a practical standpoint, we do need two spaces per unit. So very straightforward, half-loaded parking aisle with 16 spaces. We are providing one accessible space. Also, there's a trash enclosure proposed in this location, fully enclosed and screened via landscaping. I can show you that. The lighting that's proposed are just pedestrian-level lighting. We want to keep the lighting levels to provide, very low, to provide minimal safety, but we don't want to impact the neighbors. So again, very low lighting.
Can I ask the architect? So the stair that's being proposed, that's the stair supporting the original house for egress, for second egress. So you're pulling that to the outside. And those are being built as pretty much townhomes.
That's right.
As such, right? Are they going to be sold? I mean, it's really not a business, but.
No.
Just want to ask a question.
And there are architectural elevations. If you have a packet of the plans, I see 11 by 17 versions, you'll see in the back, there are architectural plans provided.
I'm assuming all the snow is going to be stuck into the back end. You're going to have to go way back.
I know I'm blowing it, yeah. So where's the snow?
I'm just asking where it's all going.
Yeah, pretty much. I mean.
The way it looks, that's the only place you have.
What you see is what I see. So I can't really see the vision, but.
It's an open land, it's an open lawn area back there. So it makes perfect sense.
Kind of what I do now.
I just think, you know, it's a snow and all the runoff that is going to be going down on Martin Road. You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Is that designated on there?
It isn't, but it was one of Bill's comments, so we added.
Did you, did you address all of Bill's comments?
We are in the process of doing that. We haven't, we haven't yet received all of his comments, but we received the vast majority of them. We're in the process of revising the plans and providing written responses.
But you're, you're in compliance and favor with the responses that Bill's given you back, that you're going to implement in case we have to vote with that in condition thereof, so.
We have a lot of comments.
There's a lot of comments. They're all pretty minor in nature, if you look at them individually.
They're just, you know, technical.
But you're going to address, I mean, you will.
Absolutely. We have no issues with any of the comments.
Concept, it looks okay. It's, it's, you know, showing the property boundary, getting a land survey stamp, you know, stuff like that.
Some drafting items.
Nothing fatal.
Pretty straightforward.
Ash-to site distance, it's egressing the site, you know, he's going to go, you know, take a look at that.
Yeah, as you exit the site, there are some plantings here, some juniper plantings that essentially block the site distance. So we're addressing that. Some of those will have to, if not all of them, will have to be removed to improve site distance. But I wanted to show you this. This is where the snow storage is proposed. These are the underground infiltration chambers for drainage. This is just a lawn area that just makes perfect sense to push snow.
Well, the only thing I ask is, because on this drawing, you're showing coverage of trees and or whatever.
That's the existing canopy. That's, you're seeing the existing tree canopy. A little deceiving, understood.
Tree canopy line.
So, see where I'm going? It's showing it's all blocked off, but that one there's not showing it at all.
They're very mature trees. So that tree line you see is the canopy above.
There's the trees on the other side of the property, right?
Yeah, I see them.
It's actually on the, it's tough to see.
Do you have some ground lighting shown?
We have low-level pedestrian lighting. And we don't want to impact the neighbors. We want to keep it, you know, minimal for safety. So the plan itself is pretty straightforward. I'm happy to answer additional questions or go over it in additional detail. Yes, sir.
So how many new structures are actually added here? I mean, you've got the five.
It is all one contiguous structure. So essentially, from this point back is new. So one, two, three, four, five units.
Kind of like condos or townhouses or something.
The townhouses essentially.
And they're, looks like they're connected by.
Connected by shared walls between them.
That's the architectural floor plan.
Looks like a, what do you call it?
They're separate units dwelling, but they're attached.
And you can see they step back, and they also step, as I previously mentioned, nine inches in elevation.
I think you just talked about the common area between the main.
Right, yeah.
Well, but there's no, yeah, there's no access between that and those units on the right.
Right, correct.
Correct, that's correct.
To accommodate the required means egress for the units. Without an.
Now, the fire system going in the old building too? We have to update the code.
Unfortunately, yes.
Yeah, because of the fire, I'll make you update, yeah.
You're going to go to Central Station as far as the.
Alarm box.
It was required.
Yeah.
Fire chief will, that'd be good. Safer, healthier. This is way better. A blessing in disguise, probably.
Anybody else in the board?
So we're still waiting from a few different departments. As you know, the bylaw requires a 35-day response period. If they don't hear from them, we can't close the hearing until we do hear from them. So we're still waiting for a few. When we get them, we will forward them. And if we don't get them, you're good to go after that. With regard to the, there's two waivers that are being requested, and I think they're going to maybe modify a little bit on the first one, I'm assuming, which is the plan presentation.
We can elaborate on that, as you commented.
Yes. And the second waiver pertains to.
Traffic impact.
Traffic impact study. The only, I tend to agree. I mean, the number of vehicles per day that keep accessing and egressing the site is relatively minor. It's only increasing by one unit from what pre-existed. The only thing I would, I ask them to look at as part of traffic would be the ash-to site distance egressing the site.
Which we have done, and I'll report on that. But site distance, once we deal with, once we mitigate those junipers, site distance is more than adequate.
The other thing that I wanted the board to kind of think about is, and perhaps some of the butters are here, is, you know, since there's such a significant change from what used to be there to what is now, screening, if it's adequate, and, you know, the board should think about that, it is surrounding residential area. And, you know, they have a few plantings that are proposed in a couple of spots around the site. But the board should make a determination on that.
I can walk you through what's there today if that's helpful.
Well, I'd like to ask the mansard back there, what's the height to the ridge, you think, rough and tough, that's already existing?
That's on your.
The back end. Is it like 28 feet or something?
You don't have it, Gary. I think I have it on my.
Have the elevation.
26 or so, existing.
I have it in my table.
38.7 feet, if that's correct.
Existing? Well, I meant the back existed.
Oh, the back.
That's been, that's been raised. You don't remember.
Yeah, we don't have that drawn here. It's a two-story.
Right, so you're going to be about.
The grade is lowered back.
So what's your new townhomes, the height, rough and tough?
33 and a half.
There might be one or two more waivers that come out of how they address some of my comments. I don't think they're anything significant. It's just strict compliance with the regs. And Mike indicated to me during our meeting that, you know, one of the thing I saw repetitively in the regs was no illumination towards the night sky from the lights that are proposed. So it's going to further detail that the luminaires that are proposed are in fact, you know, cut-off luminaires or.
Shielded.
Shielded, to not go up for night sky. I don't see the neighbors being a problem, but.
It's so low, they're low and then there's shrubbery and stuff.
This is the fixture, and it's an eight-foot mounting height. And so we've already revised that detail to make sure that the option is, it's a solid top with a cutoff, so you don't get.
Where are they though, if they're eight feet high? I thought you said there were some walkway ones that are only like three or four feet high.
Pedestrian, pedestrian-level lights, I refer to them as. They're eight-foot.
I thought you were suggesting that they were the, just the.
Not a baller. They are, it's a lamppost. Because the ballers just don't cast enough light into the parking. We want to get a little bit of light into these parking spaces. But we certainly don't want to impact the neighbors in any way.
Was there always a dumpster there before?
Yeah, that was the trash area, yeah.
It was? So that's staying pretty much where it always was and.
Yeah. And those neighbors on that side, I think they've been there, I mean, I get along with it very well. So on the right side, if you're coming into the driveway, you know.
No, just checking whether that.
Yeah, no, we talked about, you know, like the sightlines going down and.
Give it some, I see that screening around it for the neighbors and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean.
There's an enclosure and plantings.
I don't think there's any butters even here, but I could be wrong.
Yeah.
One of the things, one of the things that did come up, if I could, was headlight glare during the ZBA proceedings as cars exit. So we proposed a four-foot-high solid PVC fence to mitigate glare across the street.
How much of this area between the structures and the border? A lot of that, when you drive by and look, that looks like it's all paved, or it used to be paved and it's kind of torn up.
It's paved about in this location.
There's some dumpsters there. There's some, what's, what's the intent there? To make that a parking area?
Yes, we're actually going to pull some of the pavement away from the southerly lot line and then extend it along the front of the units. So there will be a small net increase in.
So the park would be in front of the units, which is kind of nice.
So I'm in the middle of reviewing the stormwater. I had a few comments, so they could get going on a few of my concerns, more from an operational perspective than a number crunching perspective. And there's no monumentation for the property boundary shown. I'm going to include that. I did see the iron pins in the field where they are there. I did have a brief conversation with the fire chief after he submitted his comments, which he was suggesting that perhaps we have an emergency access egress, not, not a paved thing or anything like that, but just a way to get in off Martin Road. There's a section of the stone wall that is actually not there.
Yeah, it's actually shown here, but.
So label it as fire access.
And then, you know, they seem receptive to doing something to dress that.
Just even as like a lawn area.
Yeah, I mean.
Somebody had to get through.
Exactly.
There is a hydrant here.
Sometimes when I have to get into the backyard.
So they could bring hoses through here. They could even bring truck through there if they wanted to.
You know, especially don't want tenants trying to go out that way.
Right. But now in the wintertime, would you have to keep that clear? How would that go?
We don't have fires in the winter.
I'm just, I'm throwing it out there. See where I'm going? I mean, he's asking for one thing, but yet it makes it seasonal.
Yeah, we certainly would like to.
Ask the fire chief that.
Yeah.
Anything we have is going to beak it through, whatever.
It's an improvement.
We'd like to avoid paving it or even having.
No, 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 no. I'm not saying that. No, I don't want that.
You can't plow it if it's not paved, right? It'll tear up the grass and.
You can if you know what you're doing.
Yeah, the person who plows my driveway does not know what they're doing.
All right.
No, just follow up on Bill's comments, just with the landscaping. There's an area in the back that's very close to the neighbor's driveway. So Jim suggested that we put some plantings there to kind of soften that a little bit. We talked about the screening here. We're preserving as much of the vegetation along the borders as we possibly can. Right now, with the leaves off, that you can see through it, but there's some fairly significant scrub vegetation in the summertime. I'm confident that will help to screen the budding properties. But that's what we're proposing at this point. And so I think that's why Bill brought it up, just to make sure that.
It is. You know, those are, I think, the important things that Ford should think about. And I know they're on a, they're trying to accommodate an expedited timeline with getting going on this, which I appreciate. I was planning on taking a stab at least of a rough decision on this for the next meeting, presuming that, you know, the comments are rest efficient and whatnot. And then hopefully we can go from there.
Do you think, you want to, you want to put it out for the next meeting or?
I mean, I'll, I'll try my best.
If, if, well, we've got to hear the names. But I mean, if they're working on, and they satisfy you, again, we could do this to help expedite this, we could.
We can have one more meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it has to, we can't close tonight.
We're not closing tonight.
35 days.
Can't, we haven't got all the departments.
Hope to drop the decision.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address anything with this? Seeing no hands, all right, I'll ask for continuations.
We want a motion to continue the public hearing for J E H Real Estate Investment Company for 40 Depot Street to. Real Estate Investment Company for Forty Depot Street to...
Two twenty-five.
We have Blue Wave Solar on Oak Street at seven for the next meeting. Do we think a half an hour, or...
If you think everything can get wrapped up.
Blue Wave first.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Well, so, seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty.
Because Blue Wave's gonna be first.
So, seven-thirty on the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, yeah.
Oh, Blue Wave's coming in at first, gotcha.
Yeah, so it'll be seven-thirty.
Second.
Second slot. Okay, motion made by Mike Zeke, seconded by Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I propose. Any extensions?
Nope.
Motion carries. So, thank you for coming in. We'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Fire.
Deer Crossing first.
Yeah. Woodland State.
Yeah.
Bill, we're gonna start on discussion.
Yep.
You want to take an order?
Yep.
ATM on road acceptance, deer crossing subdivision, Woodland Road.
Yep. So, we have Tim Nealon here. We're specifically talking about Woodland Road, part of Deer Crossing. So, basically, between South Street and Old Farm Road is the section of road we're looking at.
Well, thirty-three hundred square feet. The improvements, for the most part, were there now over ten years. The drainage, the drainage ponds, the sidewalk and the roadway. The finisher wear coat was done about two years ago in November. So, everything's essentially done. There's been a little damage to the road since it was finished a few years ago. We have proposals to repair some curbing, some of the Cape Cod burn, and a particular patch. But other than that, we feel it's totally complete. Drainage has been operating all these years. We've been maintaining the ponds, so, you know, we feel it's in shape.
Okay. Is there monuments out there?
There's monuments out there. We did walk in a few weeks ago. John Verno, myself, and Jack Nealon. And, you know, that's when we identified a few things that need to get touched up prior to the annual town meeting. So, we... Tim did bring milars with him, and as you know, we're kind of doing the preliminary work to get it accepted. He's putting the package together, showing all the deeds, all the conveyances to the town, briefsments. We're gonna have town council review that. You know, we did the inspection, and we have a punch list. So, it's in process for our... The Board of Selectment Policy for road acceptance. One of those things is that the board actually... This board actually vote to recommend acceptance and endorse the milars for the road layout and acceptance.
The punch list includes... I noticed a couple of spots where an excavator turned on the road and walked us, and that's ripped up a little bit.
That's exactly the things... The types of things that, you know, towards the intersection of Old Farm, there's some issues with the berm that we weren't too happy about. So, we think it kind of got destroyed during a house being constructed. So, we talked to Jack about it, and we're confident that they'll get addressed prior to the annual town meeting.
Boyd, any comments or questions?
No.
I know there's some monuments or all monuments.
The board did waive a few of the concrete bounds that were installed and allowed them to do iron pins in this place because of shallow ledge. But all the bonds are there. All the monuments are there, let me put it down.
So, what do you want to say with this tonight?
Well, I would suggest... I would suggest that you vote to recommend pending sufficient repair of the punch list items.
So moved.
Second.
That was a so moved.
Yeah.
That's not a hearing, not a... I just wanted to know if there's no other questions or comments from anybody. I mean, just ask them, so...
Well, I mean, I gotta say, you know, the road, and I want you to pay attention to this, because the quality of the construction that are in the more recent subdivisions is significant compared to some of the older projects, and, you know. So, the monitoring and the inspection and the quality assurance and control that's now implemented, really, this speaks to it.
Oh, yeah. You've always been great dealing with us. I have no complaints.
You'll continue to be. I'll be sure of that.
All right. So, it's been so moved. It's like a...
Motion's made. Bill wasn't even finished. The board wasn't even finished coming out of that mouth.
We had it all. We had it all set.
All right, motion made by Mike Zeke, seconded by Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, how many milars do we have to sign?
There are four sheets.
Three sheets.
I can leave the...
You can leave them, we can sign them, but we don't like to hold on to milars as a general rule, for obvious reasons.
I'm one of the...
Yes, exactly.
Sign one, or no?
No, 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 no. So, we'll have to.
So, you can... You'll say.
Sign them now, then.
Now?
Do it after.
At the end. Okay, all right. You're okay with it, Bill, leaving them? All right.
Not really, but...
Well, yeah, I know, there. I mean, it's on you now, bro. Okay. McIntyre, leave.
You might want to take item three first.
Well, you want to take item three first? Okay, sleepy hollow up there. Ask for plan.
Sleepy hollow. They're sleepy back there. I met with... Phil and I met this afternoon, so the ASBIL's not done, it's well on its way. Bill's gonna put some comments on, and I will be confident in two weeks that we'll have a stamp plan. We met to go over the schedule of moving forward on the subdivision for Jim. That schedule kind of allays that it'll get paved in the early in April, mid-April, when the plant's open. And then Jim would start construction on houses wherever that falls. So, things are moving forward. Unfortunately, the ASBIL's not complete. It's been surveyed by Allen Engineering. It just has to have the PLS stamp on it. Excuse me.
Bill?
Well, I haven't had a chance to go through this, but the first couple of obvious things that I'd like to have included on the plan. Take all the stuff referencing the subdivision off the plan, as this is specific to the earth removal portion. Obviously, as Andy indicated, land surveyor stamp, want to show what the permit grades are and the horizontal limit of what they were permitted for, so that we can check that one versus the other. And that's gonna tell us where they are relative to the plan.
Cool. You ready with that?
Next meeting?
Yeah.
So, next meeting, update plan?
So, this is just mostly an update on what's going down?
Yeah.
So, you know what Bill wants?
Yeah, well, he'll make a list.
Check it twice.
Check it twice. But you will have a ready for next meeting? That's what I'm...
What would be the possible vote on this?
We've put possible vote on everything now, in case we have to vote on something that night.
Okay.
We're thinking, and I'm just gonna have possible vote on it.
Okay. All right.
The five, the attorney general's saying that we get your votes.
All right. Thank you for coming in.
Just to push some money out there.
Everything's up for vote, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Supposed to be made... It's supposed to make things clearer, but...
Oh, I didn't... I'm sorry, Jeremy, I didn't see your hand.
Yeah, one more month goes by, and once again, we get the proverbial middle finger. He doesn't do what he was asked of the last meeting, and once again, as a neighbor, I have to live with this dust, all this dust. And it looks just like, well, welcome to Douglas, the big sand pit of... As soon as you come in, right down hot for that. I'm very disappointed in this board for not kind of enforcing... Yesterday, he had two front-end loaders down there. I don't know what they're doing. So, if he's gonna be doing an ASBIL, if he had two front-end loaders down there yesterday, which mysteriously disappeared today, or maybe they're hidden underneath the banking of the cliff, I don't know. I can't tell. But if he's gonna do an ASBIL to give to this board, it might be... It might vary from what is actually happening out there. I saw it on my eyes.
Nothing's left. Nothing's left this time. Go ahead, Jeremy. No, you can direct any comments to me, and we'll go through the...
Mr. Chairman, I'm not asking him. Mr. Chairman, can we get at least some loom down and some seed, and so we can prevent some of this dust, Mr. Chairman?
Bill, have you been out to inspect the site at all lately?
Well, they're within our requirements. They have a current active permit. The board asked for an ASBIL to make sure that they didn't over-excavate in areas. That's what they're in the process of providing. But we do have a maximum area that can be opened, up to ten acres at a time. They're well under that threshold, and, you know, so... I mean, as a good neighbor, I would suggest that they try to do what they can. I know they did come in at one point with a mitigation plan for dust control, and I'm not sure what the status is of that. Perhaps they can talk about the last time that was applied. If there's a concern about dust, certainly, you know. And I always encourage the neighbors and the butters to contact me if there's an issue, so I can document it, and then contact them and get it on record, so we have a warning.
Has it been? Have you been getting contacted?
I have not.
Okay.
I mean, the last time I was contacted was probably two or three years ago.
Yeah, and we met in...
And that's when we had them put together a mitigation plan.
Well, I would say to that point, that the proper procedure, if there was dust, if you were to call Bill's office, but the... We're moving ahead with the construction, which allows it gets paved, which allows it completed. Well, that's what we have to do to...
That wasn't the assurance, Mr. Chairman, that was given to me. Now, and if he has to go beyond, well, if he's allowed up to ten acres, and at the elevation that he is, if he gets even close to that ten acres, is the slope gonna be so severe that kids in the neighborhood, because this is a budding neighbor's houses, a kid's gonna maybe get hurt? Because now the slope is so extreme, and he's still under his ten acre minimum.
It's in the yard for me.
And, of course, the slope is not loomed or seeded.
Well, that's two separate issues, right? Because...
It's part of the permit, sir.
No, no, but hold on a second, Jeremy. We talked before. I'm not hearing you. We're hearing you. It's that, and I'm newer to this. So, the earth removal is done.
Well, it's not done. It's an open permit.
Huh?
It's not done because they still have an open permit.
Yeah, but he's done removing, and your point is well taken. You can't...
He's still an open permit.
He's got an open permit. The question that was put before the board is, you know, not... No apparent earth has been taken out of there for quite some time.
So, we're looking...
And this discussion occurred when they were looking for their extension. So, the board discussed it. They granted the extension for one year, and with the expectation that we have a definitive timeline. We have an ASBIL plan demonstrating what grades they're at. They haven't over-excavated. The side slopes are at what they were permitted to be. This is what we're in the process of getting on.
Yeah, right, but once this ASBIL is put before us and it's accepted, then that's the end of the...
Nope.
No, there's still more to be excavated out of this.
It could be. It's just a guideline to see where they're at. At this time, we have no idea the grade level where they're at. So, an ASBIL will show it.
But he's talking about a road already.
This is...
No, I understand that, but he wants to get started soon, and, you know...
So, where are you relative to where you think you're gonna end up as far as more excavation of earth removal and elevations?
There'll be very little earth removed from that site. The... A lot of the slopes are long-deceded, and they're at the... All the ones that are long-deceded, and the majority of them are at the three-to-one or two-to-one that was specified in the earth removal permit. So, the roads relatively at subgrade within a foot, I think, we'll find. We left the pond a little low to catch water. So, I think that, and to Bill's point, that is an interim ASBIL plan that is not the final article.
Is this what we used to call stage one?
No, this is phase three.
Phase three.
Okay. The other question I think Jeremy had at the last meeting was, did they do the waterline crossing of the brook?
Yep.
And they have not.
I have one more question. At one particular time, he had excavated further than he was supposed to have. And I remember Bill, me and you had talked, and that he opted to bring Phil in. That's a real key portion to this whole thing, this ASBIL, to make sure that that elevation was brought back up to where it should be in relation to everything. And when you say three-to-one, two-to-one, no, I believe it was two-to-one. That was what we all agreed on.
No.
And I believe we even talked about tiers going up, and then tiering it, and then tiering it back. And then there was one person that agreed to have land taken, and that was out for that particular person, but it didn't apply to the other nine of butters, I believe. And I don't know why we're talking phase three. We've done phase one and phase two. I don't know. Is... What is... Could somebody please tell me what phase three is? Is that beyond what we actually see?
Phase one was the front part of the site closest to Northeast Main Street. Phase two was the interior site. Then, during the same timeframe, they were permitting the subdivision, and they submitted a plan after phase two, which basically mirrored what was on the subdivision plan, but encompassed the entire site.[1548.12] And I remember Bill, me and you had talked, and that he opted to bring Phil in. That's a real key portion to this whole thing, this ASBIL, to make sure that that elevation was brought back up to where it should be in relation to everything. And when you say three to one, two to one, no, I believe it was two to one. That was what we all agreed on. And I believe we even talked about tiers going up, and then tiering it, and then tiering it back. And then there was one person that agreed to have land taken, and that was out for that particular person, but it didn't apply to the other nine abutters, I believe. And, and I don't know why we're talking phase three. We've done phase one and phase two. I don't know, is, what is, what is, could somebody please tell me what phase three is? Is that beyond what we, what we actually see?
Phase one was the front part of the site closest to northeast Main Street. Phase two was the interior site. Then during the same timeframe, they were permitting the subdivision, and they submitted a plan after phase two, which basically mirrored what was on the subdivision plan, but encompassed the entire site. That was phase three.
Has a permit, earth removal wise, been pulled for phase three yet?
And granted, and that's the extension that they got, Jeremy.
And now that would put it within a hundred feet of?
No.
Of abutters?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. All right, we'll see you next meeting when you have. Bill, number two, McIntyre?
Yes, I didn't realize they were here.
It was.
McIntyre loom, obtained.
There we go.
That's how it's done.
John Power McIntyre loom, Dan McIntyre. Dan, heading in. Well, the land surveyor did the gray lines on this, which is the current existing. The gray lines, there's blue lines that were.
We actually sent two plans. One was an existing condition plan that the land surveyor did. We had aerial photography to get that plan. And then at Bill's request, we did a second plan, which overlaid the proved gravel permit plan on top of the existing condition plan.
This is, is this, this is where I come to get relevant, right?
So what this plan shows?
This plan shows a few things, okay? As we discussed, the thick dashed blue lines are the permitted areas. The, as they indicated, the gray or black lines are what's existing today. The blue contour lines are the permit limits, and the red.
The red was the ASBIL at the time they submitted the permit plan.
So ignore the red. There's a couple of groundwater contour lines that are shown diagonally going across the site.
This guy spent some time on his plan.
How many wells?
We put in two monitoring wells. One's been there quite a while, we put in a new one recently, so we can kind of get a profile through the site.
We've been, we've been asking them to move forward with restoration. As you may recall, this came back before us. The permit's from like 2004, something like that. And, and it's just been continued through a continuation bond for restoration. We started getting some complaints from a property abutter about the operation, and so therefore, we started looking into it. And that's why we're having them in, and kind of develop a plan towards restoring the site. And that's what this is an attempt to do. So most recently, previously, these side slopes were restored previously. So that's the, where is north? So, so it's east and south side slopes had been restored. Then there was about an acre that most recently, that was restored down here on the floor.
Correct. So, very close, this is a, from basically this pile, straight over to that well, and south has been restored. Slopes flat, everything, except for access. When we're working, we brought in a whole new batch of material, and we're starting on the northern base. And that, and our proposal, that's all that was the next section to be done.
And so it's good John contacts me when they're just writing the material, and gives me a tour after they're done.
I'm gonna plead ignorance, because I know nothing about this kind of thing. So, you know, I've been there, big piles of material and such, it's a materials yard. And is that what these are representing?
Those are piles.
Right.
Different piles of different materials.
And then why, why is there such a thing as restoration? I mean, why is there, anything that's ongoing?
The permit doesn't allow the whole thing to be wide open at any time.
Also, the initial permit is to use certain areas and then move around.
Well, frankly, frankly, I mean, you know, look at the previous conversation we had. They're still within an active permit, and we're saying, hey, let's start buttoning up the site. This site was permitted in 2004. And so, you know, I'm sure if we look closely, the surety values could come up as a question. And, you know, prices of materials have gone up, so, so it's in their interest really to start buttoning this up.
So it's not like, you know, you've got these landscape businesses, and they've got piles of stuff everywhere for forty years, and they store material, they get rid of the material. This is something different.
This isn't earth removal permit, period. We're not talking, whatever they've been, another example, Pine has dolphines over there. They had a permitted area that they were currently stockpiling materials in. And, you know, we had them hold surety on that for a while.
So this, with the earth removal on this, it wasn't just a flat plan, and they're storing materials and then?
Then they started bringing in and reprocessing.
Worst case, the whole entire site is open, and then we need to pay to restore.
Correct.
That's, that's what you're, where it goes wrong.
Right, so you have certain areas open at one time, and not the whole.
But they also have to work to restore it, and if they don't, and something happens, we've gotta do it as a town. They use that surety.
Can that keep moving over a hundred years? Can they keep moving and restoring and moving?
It can only go so deep.
Oh, because they're removing.
If they restore.
It's just not a lay.
Ten, ten feet above.
Well, it's gonna be, it was a pit, and that's what he said, it's been open since '04. Trying to close up that part of it. And look, the other half, continue, see what I'm rolling? It was an open pit. Covered up, but you can still use it as a yard.
They're not using, they're not doing earth removal.
To stop, right, so you have to clean up the earth removal site. The processing side is what's done every day. It comes in, it's processed, and goes back out.
Do you guys have a screener and a crusher?
See what I'm saying? So this is like back when it was an open pit.
See, I didn't know.
Regular piece of land.
Piece of land that they have all these piles, and they give it to.
Don't clean, close it off.
We don't, certainly don't intend to walk away and leave it as it is. It's a valuable piece of property to us.
I'm just saying, worst case.
Oh, nice.
So, you know, we're just gonna continue towards restoring the site on their schedule, and.
Yeah, just.
And then some plans for what the, you know. Removal permit is buttoned up. You plan on doing business out of there after the permit's all buttoned up, right? So we'll need something.
It's industrial zone.
Just so we know what's going on, and the permit for what's going on after the.
Solar, thanks for the. Little green, greenhouses. The green, green.
Thank you for coming in.
It's all yours.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
What happened to all these?
Everybody's keeping them, no, we're keeping them.
Sure, I'm not sure what these folks are here for. So either solar or lakeside.
All right, solar regulations.
Solar may be a quicker conversation. So we might want to take that first.
Sure.
Number four?
Yeah, solar.
That's what's up next, anyway.
Yeah, we already did lakeside.
Yeah, we already did that.
We're gonna go back to lakeside. Yeah, solar regulations.
Okay, so at the last meeting, the board asked me to reach out to the town of Webster, and ask if they had any issues with their current bylaw, or if they.
And what was their response?
They said they're redoing their bylaw. So. So I did have Maria forward to you a copy of a number of different towns' bylaws. I did not print them out, because I could hear. You told me which one you like, and then we'll print them out. And so primarily, her comments revolved around the decommissioning and the surety associated with decommissioning. They didn't like the size of the arrays that they were permitting, they wanted it to go smaller. So they had concerns about blown off. They wanted to kind of do a site plan kind of list of requirements specific to solar. So, so Town Council, which they share the same Town Council we have, sent them a number of bylaws, which is what I forwarded to everyone, so. So you have homework again. Take a look at those, let me know which one you think is appropriate, and we'll start pulling in. Or a combination, yeah.
They, does Webster propose changes?
They're in the, they're very. They're just starting their conversation with Town Council.
So they're in the same, everybody's in the same boat. Because of the Dover, and everything else, having to be rocking on eggshells, and, but yet, trying to have something in there.
Yeah, these people are here for solar.
Annual report.
These people are here for solar.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay, yes, any comments or questions? Need your name and your address.
My name is Lori, I'm on 41 Oak Street. Well, I have three questions, which towns are you reviewing?
Which towns?
Webster's.
What's the first one we got?
Webster.
Well, Webster about to review, and then.
Webster Sutton, we looked at.
Bill's got them there.
Yeah, and I think we looked at some other.
I'm emailing to you right now.
Yeah, you can send, you can send the list, I think we might have pulled one from the Cape.
Okay.
And we're gonna weigh in on this too, you know.
Sure.
Some of the, like, Webster's, but when we did the COCs, their, their small scale was nine and a half acres.
So we've got some numbers on that.
Different compilations.
So, you know, we, we came into this topic because of the Oak Street project, and we see how the SMART program is, it seems like it's not going to. Programs like that where it's dual use, it seems like those wouldn't fall under the solar zoning bylaw or overlay district. Is that your understanding as well, or is that, is that something that you can decide upon within these bylaws?
At the local level.
Yeah.
We can, we can still decide.
Okay, I just, you know, I don't wanna be surrounded by them.
State program. They have their state approval.
Smart programs have different reimbursements.
Okay, I know I've seen someone that said the solar zoning doesn't apply to like primarily agriculture, and, you know, it seems like the, that SMART program kind of gets people in under the radar.
That's what you say agriculture, there's a farm, it is, yeah.
Right, but in this case, that, that property is not actually being used for agriculture right now, and they're just like kind of sliding it in. So I just, I'm curious how we'll see.
It's under sixty-one.
I understand.
It's under that program, so it is act.
Yeah, no, I understand that, I just, I just wanna know how, how far this goes.
I think that was in Charlton, where the judge said that it was an incidental accessory use, you know, accessory to the principal use, which was the farm, the orchard.
Okay.
So that's, is that what you were asking about?
Not Charlton specifically, but I had looked at North Field Field.
She hays all her field, I mean, she steps me, she hays me every year.
I'm not sure, yeah, I'm not sure if that would be considered an agricultural use.
Yes.
I'm just trying to determine.
No, I'm saying, this specific site that she's talking about.
Yeah, and I understand that this site wouldn't be affected by what's, you know, decisions that are made later. But just kind of wondering about, you know, what kind of loopholes might need to be considered. And I know you guys are considering that too. So I did look at Dudley, I don't know if that one, that one was one of yours, but just wanna mention that they, their fencing may not exceed six feet in height, so in order to, you would have to have a bigger setback in order to avoid the shade. Right, right, so that was just one thing, but I certainly will review whatever towns we have.
Okay, no, that's the six foot, eight for fencing.
And then just how is like a solar overlay district, how does that work? If that was on the last meeting topic.
Are we allowed to even do that?
We don't have a solar.
No, I know, but it was.
Yeah, I'm not even sure we could do that.
It can't.
You can't posit the Dover.
I see.
Tons of trying to do an overlay for solar in their towns, and then basically, you can't, you get overruled by the Dover Amendment.
Okay, so it's state law superseding, okay.
State and or federal, I think.
Okay, great, thank you.
There's very little we can do to regulate.
It's one of those areas that is pretty well, it's been, right now it's being protected pretty heavily.
The reimbursement rate is where they've been guiding a little bit, because initially, it was where they wanted, they wanted to do brownfield sites. And then they went back and said, okay, you know, open it up, and they could do more residential. And now with the new program, the SMART program, they wanna actually do more industrial, commercial zoned areas. Something like that, or bigger sites.
Right.
So that's kind of, if you look at what the reimbursement is for the current program, that kind of guides where, what direction it goes in.
Which obviously places Douglas in their line of sites.
Any, any community.
Well, with.
Auburn's a huge one.
You've seen it throughout, because the bombing is disappearing a little bit, but yet, they wanna keep the property.
Understandably so. I'm not against it, I just want to minimize the impact.
As we develop this, you should stay involved if you can.
I would like to.
Brian LeVette, Kearney Road. So in regards to this, because it sounds like I'm in a similar situation as them in regards to the solar, has this board put in a moratorium on solar projects in the interim?
Dover Amendment.
But when Town Council was here and he spoke on it, he said that has been challenged, right? And solar was kind of like been proven in a couple cases to be in a different situation than the churches, the schools, and all of that under the Dover's. So I guess, it was just a question. Because while you figure this out, while, that's what's happening, all these solar companies are getting in before the law catches up to it. And in my mind.
The law was catching up to it, then they, then they included them in the Dover Amendment, which.
But when, what was Adam, Adam was it, from Town Council was here? Didn't he specifically state a couple instances where that has been challenged and overturned as far as the solar protection under Dover Amendment?
Mine is saying was.
There's very little case law, no, there's very little case law, he said, on it. So he said the language, the enabling language for the solar is different than the religious and educational Dover Amendment uses. So he thought his interpretation was based on that language, that we could limit it with a special permit process.
But a moratorium's not saying, no, you can't, it's just saying, we're putting a hold until we figure it out.
No, a moratorium is saying, no, you can't for that period of time.
That's what it's basically saying, yeah, which you can't do.
So what's to stop somebody else from coming in right now and putting in another solar in your backyard, your backyard, or your backyard?
The reimbursement rate.
We still have site plan review.
You still have site plan review, but you have the reimbursement rate.
And now who does the site plan review, you guys, right?
This is all becoming here, yeah, just like the other ones.
I just think as a, as a board, until it gets figured out, it needs to kind of be slow rolled out.
We can, we can vote on anything we want to, but we can't create situations where we have to end up going to court and paying Town Council for no reason at all, because we know we're not gonna win.
Well, somebody's gonna be the first one to challenge it at some point, right?
So we need the solar to get the money, so that we could fight the solar.
All the money we get, we give back to the.
It's just, it's a significant impact to the abutters, as you guys know, you've heard it before.
Yeah, that's what we have site plan review, we do have site plan review, and we can request certain things that make it more pleasant for the abutters, that's not impacting them as much, but that's the multiple.
Because we can institute setbacks, greater setbacks.
That's why we have site plan reviews.
Some screening.
Screening doesn't work, Mike. The screening gets killed by the glare from the panels, I've seen it happen before.
I'm talking about building something where you can't see them.
It's a combination, dual purpose.
One more question, and we're gonna move on.
My name's Bill Rossi, 41 Oak Street. And I was wondering how these facilities are taxed? Like, how much money does a town get for?
Okay, it's the selectmen.
Selectmen, the selectmen negotiate what the towns pay for.
Is it typically negotiated, or do they pay it the standard rate?
The jury's out on the taxability of this particular use.
That's been challenged.
That's been challenged in other towns, so what we do is put a condition in the decision at their request that requires them to negotiate a pilot payment and move taxes.
It becomes a mutual thing, so they're not fighting us.
Because they don't have to.
Yeah, but I believe that's only on the. Yeah, but that's only on the structures. It's only on the structures, the land is separate.
Right, it's the panels.
It's the panels themselves that's taxed, in the pilot program, but the land is separate.
It's like, let's make a deal. But it's substantial, you know, and, right? I mean, these have been, they're numbers, and they're substantial.
And there's towns that have lost, that, you know, in the early stages, where they, they were collecting taxes on it, or taxing it at a higher rate, and then end up losing, and then have to kick a refunds back. And that was in six feet.
That's, we do a pilot program, we don't tax.
That's why.
Of course, if you can.
So instead of the taxing, it becomes the pilot program, which is the agreement, right? That's. So let's make a deal.
It's another terminology of working out something with town.
The other thing we should probably just really quickly mention is when you went up to the other site and drafted.
Oh, yeah, you might not realize this, but these solar plants produce radio frequency noise. I went and visited the site and drafted a couple weeks ago, and I brought an AM receiver with me, and I wasn't able to listen to anything, I could not get the local station to off Austin, because the plant was making so much noise. This was on a cloudy day.
All the way down the street where the power, the new power lines went.
I could hear it all the way down the street, as long as I was under the overhead lines.
Which is something we've talked about. Dan's, he does have ham radio license and uses it. So we did talk to the solar company about that, but that might be something to consider.
And to your point on the moratorium, this was November 2019. Athol got, well, at their special town meeting that July, got approved a temporary solar moratorium. And the Attorney General approved it for one year, which gives the board one year to produce new solar bylaws and amendments.
Who knew?
And Charlton also has a board to solar moratorium review committee. And so fifteen months was approved. Ware got approved for fourteen months.
By the Attorney General?
Yeah.
I'm sure that's, I'm sure that's going to court.
Well, if the AG approves it, then.
And it would have to be challenged. What does it hurt to put a moratorium in?
Well, we, what I was hearing, that we couldn't do it.
Yeah, that's what I had. Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
And then I just Google it and it's.
So you make a motion right now?
Charlton also formed a review committee and I don't know where they are at.
Thinking forty-four acres out there.
I don't know, we'd have to do some more reconnaissance.
Okay. If we sit in the board.
We could probably get the moratorium language, it's easy enough.
Well, if that's true, let's look into it if you wanna do that.
If we want to.
Well, it's been brought up, so we should be aware of it.
Yeah.
I just think until you figure it out, you know, when, when the whole Wallam Lake project was, was going, put through and there was fifty people there saying, no, 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 and you guys approved it anyway, but then last planning board meeting, we were talking about how detrimental and flammable these things can be and this and that. We didn't talk about that when we did the other.
No, we did, oh yeah, we did.
We did, we did.
It's like, but what I'm saying is, I just feel like you guys need to do something. It's, put, put yourselves in the issue and somebody else to choose.
To the public, to be fair on that one.
So, on one part of that, I am. I live across the street from where this is going, so.
So the Walla.
I know what's going on here too.
The Walla Lake one, to be fair, Tracy and I worked up on some drawings and we got some negotiations with them and they gave some, uh, uh, they backed up on some things, on some panels, they gave back, they put, they increased setbacks, so we were.
Extra, extra, uh, detention points.
Detention points. No, I know, we talked and, and it was good that, you know, I got, we got some kudos for making the effort to negotiate that with the folks. So I'm just saying that I, I just wanna.
Yeah.
Um, Charlton looks like they also got it, um, they also got approved by attorney general, the moratorium.
Which town?
Charlton.
That's all gonna be new then, right?
Yeah, it's all for the years.
Um, this was, um.
Fall of nineteen?
No, it was spring of nineteen, May, two thousand nineteen, annual town meeting.
Write something for us.
This purpose of this moratorium is to allow sufficient time to engage in a planning process to address the effects of such structures and uses in the town and enact bylaws in a manner consistent with sound land use planning goals and objectives. So that's three that I found in three minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We're looking at it, we're looking at it. We, we were under the impression that we, we couldn't put a moratorium on, if we can, we'll look into it.
Yeah, sounds good.
You'll get new laws.
Okay. Could've told us.
You got homework.
Can we ask Bill?
Add him to the total, please.
Can we request to town council about that?
Give them those.
When we find out the moratoriums.
Athol, Ware, Charlton.
We get what you pay for. I know, well, we, we, we can pull our own, we can pull what the.
Yeah, I know.
What are you asking me to do?
About town council, we thought that we couldn't do a moratorium, but here we're finding out.
Athol, Athol.
Charlton.
No, 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 I was commenting myself that I didn't think we could.
No.
No one ever asked me to put that question.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 that's on big enough.
No, we're not saying that.
So Brian was saying that town council said that, the last meeting.
Well, I, uh, don't get me wrong, I didn't say, he said we could do a moratorium, I just said when he was here, when Adam was here, specifically to talk about these two lakeside and solar, he specifically, the way I remember it,
Yeah.
stated that the solar is kind of under different verbiage under the Dover amendment. It has been challenged and there are a couple instances, not a lot of instances, but a couple of instances that Dover had been challenged and overwritten, pertaining specifically to solar. So.
All right.
Yeah, we'll find.
We'll look into it.
Thank you for the input.
Thanks.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thanks for volunteering your time here.
Reminding us what these were, bless me.
All right, let's, let's go back to Lakeside.
Lakeside. So I did find my notes and I see I wrote section six binding and Miss Attani Costello said a provision that mimics master watch chapter forty-eight, section six can be adopted. So you guys did discuss.
Yeah, yeah.
Changing our local bylaw.
So we did, the way it was left, if you'll read the last meeting minutes, not the.
I'm reading them.
Not the past meeting when you weren't here, the one prior.
The time.
When Adam was here.
Yeah.
The time.
And you had indicated in meetings like this that you were gonna write something up and submit it.
It wasn't from that meeting, it was from.
It was the meeting after Adam was here.
Yes.
Yes. So, I think, yeah, we can go in that direction.
Yeah. In the minutes, don't reflect that I was to submit something. Mister Marks asked for town council's opinion after it says Mr. Sharkey would prefer an as of right rather than a determination by the building inspector.
Maybe it was earlier minutes, I've, I've seen that somewhere. There's a meeting before that.
Okay, yes, annual town report.
Is that what we're talking about?
Oh yeah, we're gonna do the town report. Do you wanna do the annual town report first, Bill?
Uh, why don't we wrap up Lakeside if we have more conversation on that? So, so town council had distributed that draft, if you have specific feedback, that would be good for me to relate to. Um, in your packet, I have, uh, notes that were submitted through Aaron, uh, from the last meeting. I also included a couple of sketches, um, that, that show the envelope area sizes based upon the, pretty much the set, the dimensions that we've been kinda considering. So, I guess the point of that is, you know, when you have a five thousand square foot lot and the envelope area is thirty percent, putting a foot, putting a building within that entire envelope seems a little overkill. And we shouldn't be tailoring the bylaw for the worst case scenario, we should be tailoring it for what makes sense.
Yeah. So.
In the minutes. So, before we tax the attorneys more on this, should we have a sense of what direction that we go?
Yeah.
I was just asked to come up with some things and you were asked to come up with some things for, to create an overlay bylaw in dimensional capacities and such like that. But, you know, I'm personally not against it, but I'm not necessarily in favor of it.
Yeah.
So I don't know how I feel about even implementing this, so I think we should get the pulse of the board before we tax and basically tax and tax the town to pay the attorneys before we go down the, uh.
For the rabbit hole.
The rabbit hole, I was gonna use that word, it's a wormhole, rabbit hole. So, I don't know, I just wanna be responsible to the people and, you know.
So I, I guess, are we changing the other language in that, in our bylaw with, um, that Tracy highlighted? The, the right to.
As of right reconstruction, if you're meeting all the current setbacks.
If you're meeting the current setbacks.
The current setbacks, under, at the current zoning, the underlying zoning, right?
Right, exactly, so it's twenty-five, right, in our, uh, twenty-five, twenty-five.
Fifty, fifty.
Or there's no creation or in, intensification of existing non-conformities. So if you're at the line, you can reconstruct.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that if you can comply with the issues with, you know, wells and septic and the current setbacks, you should be able to build out your house to the current underlying zoning.
Correct.
Right, so if the setback's twenty-five feet and you're at forty feet, you could go up by right, well, I don't know if it's by right.
The footage and the frontage is what the issue is.
But we don't have.
Not necessarily the setbacks.
You're talking about this, so you're saying it's a non-compliant lot because it's not two acres?
Right, is the number one problem. And then the second problem is, since it's a small lot, it's encroaching on a fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five.
See, I would be in favor more so of permitting those with undersized lots to build up to the underlying zoning, which is much more restrictive than fifty, twenty-five and such, without, by, by, by right versus having to go for a fining or, you know what I mean?
You still want me to fifty foot setback?
Right, if it's a fifty foot frontage, you, it's twenty-five on each side.
Two hundred feet, not knowing the legal things, I would be personally in favor of waiving the requirement of the frontage as long as they meet all the front setbacks, side setbacks and everything else.
You're saying, you're saying an existing non-conforming law.
Correct.
But the existing non-conforming laws do not meet the, like, the frontage requirements.
I think, I think, you know, we're focused on Wallam Lake terrace, that's one thing, but, but I.
Hold on, hold on.
I, I think there's a lot of other lots that are having similar problems that are, aren't necessarily five thousand square foot lots. So to tailor this, that's right, and to tailor this on the worst case scenario, I don't think is, is really reasonable.
Correct, yeah, I don't think we look, we need to look at a five thousand square foot lot, is, that's not the.
But in a five thousand square foot lots, it's very punitive, and it's okay to be punitive, to have that twenty-five foot setbacks, fifty feet and such, that if they've somehow creatively, they can work within that and get their conservation, as you know, have more help.
Or you're gonna step back, it would be zero you would have for a building.
Then it's zero. I'm saying, let's not go, if it's five thousand, make it this.
So there's typically, so if it's an existing structure and you're not, you're staying within the same footprint,
Correct. And you've got seventy feet. Right.
Should be able to rebuild as of right.
Right. Up to the, because we don't, if, so first of all, lot coverage doesn't mean crap if you got twenty-five foot setbacks and fifty, because you're, you're probably only building like fifteen percent or twenty percent of your lot, add a five thou, or zero, like I said. So zero is the bottom and then it goes up from there. And would that be nice to, to uncouple that from the frontage requirement and?
Well, that should be that way. Your, a lot is a lot is a lot.
Correct.
It's not gonna change. If you, it's not a virgin law anymore, you can't change it. There's a house already on it, your boundaries are already set in stone.
Correct, I agree with that.
So, that shouldn't be a deterrent for people to, you know, you shouldn't have to go if you have an undersized lot, to ZBA.
Correct, if you can make.
You get a special permit.
Right. I mean, you remember saying on this, that, right, to make it more palatable in a way, we're not reducing setbacks.
So reconstruction of existing structures on those not undersized lots.
Or, or extending the, what would have been the non-conformity.
As long as you don't.
Because it's undersized lot or frontage, right? Take that away, uncouple that from it. Okay, you know what I'm saying?
No.
Extension of an existing.
Okay. Extending the non-conformity.
So.
The extension would need to not create any new non-conformities. So all the extension portions would either have to be, meet the non-conformity that is there, or.
Twenty-five, twenty-five, four, right.
Be within the setbacks.
Well, I would not.
You can't make it more non-conforming.
No, guess what, I would not.
Then you go to ZBA.
Yeah.
I would not be.
Which is what everybody's been doing.
I would not be in favor on extending a line, if they're at eight feet, I would not be favored by right of them, they'd have to go to ZBA to extend that eight foot line. But what I'm saying is, anything that's outside the twenty-five, twenty-five, fifty, whatever, they could go by right as long as they, so, so, so they're eighteen.
Your eight foot example is, is intensifying an existing non-conformity.
Correct, I would not be.
For the extension, that's what I'm saying.
I have eight feet on one side, cause it was already there.
Yeah.
Right, you've.
Already an existing.
Right, but I rebuilt it at that and, and, um, but, but what I'm saying is, when I look at my property now, I say, okay, where am I? Fifty feet, twenty-five, whatever, what can I do? Well, I can go.
Nothing.
I don't know, on someone else's property, but they could. So I'm saying, why restrict them and? So, it's the only different take I'm taking on this is that if you have a one acre lot that you can build up to the, but not exceed the existing setbacks with the underlying zoning of two acre, right? But, but we waive by right, frontage and lot size in those also. It's wicked simple, I think, that way. Cause then you're not creating, oh my god, he's eight feet next to me, now that's coming down another ten feet and all that other crap and we don't want that, because that's.
I gotta ask a question. One of our previous times you recuse yourself from discussion, are you doing it again tonight?
No.
No, okay.
No, I think I was.
Do I have to say?
Well, I, I'd like to know if you're gonna participate in, in the meetings all the time or if you're gonna recuse yourself when you want to. I mean, if you're gonna stay for the discussion or you're not gonna stay for the discussion, I'm just curious, that's all, I'm not, I'm not ending anything from you.
I would rather not say.
You would rather not say?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I've had to do with the solar stuff, depending on the applicant and stuff like that.
Is that?
I had to have to do with the solar, uh, the one up on West Street, and I mean, depending on the applicant, but like, so.
No, I'm just curious, what you mean, you recused yourself one meeting, then you, you, you didn't tonight, so I was just wondering why you.
And I didn't, the time's afar, ain't I right?
Well, let's get this piece of paper in here.
All right.
You don't have to tell me if you don't want to, I'm just. So, 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 if, if we're to move forward, what do you, what was your thought about the side setbacks at twelve versus fifteen?
Do we wanna figure out if we're going to move forward on this first, before we talk, have any more discussion on this? I'm not trying to, well, I, like I said, I'm not against it, but I'm not in favor of this bylaw.
Well, yeah, it, does it give the, does it accomplish a few things that we wanted to do? One, was to be able to give the existing lots that are there relief, you know, and, and structures relief that wanna do decks and stuff like that, improvements on their houses, that's one. Two, our goal was never to create additional lots, five thousand square foot lots. And I think, you know, I, again, I just saw this, what Jay put together, I'd like to read through it and, and I might have some questions from Bill that we go through, but, I mean, our goal's never been to, to that. We wanted to put in, um, language around that, you know, if, if, you know, the, um, buildable aspect of it, so that you still have to maintain your separations and stuff like that, you know, what helps.
Septic required.
Yeah, no, Jay was adamant, and we went over this at the last meeting.
Yeah.
He was adamant, that doesn't have a place in something.
Correct. So that would all have to be determined anyway, so that's, which isn't a big deal, other than that. But, um, you know, again, this is the first time I saw what Jay, what Jay put together, he's changed a few of the things.
Yeah, there's a couple of them, the same ones Mark had concern about, I had concern about because it really.
I mean, the, I guess the ones that Jay put in here, three A, uh, you know, equip bill to only lots existing, you know, from January two thousand twenty, which contain fifty feet of frontage and five thousand square foot areas. That, I mean, that's basically what we've done with the overlay of the existing lots and stuff like that.
Are we gonna respond to the building inspectors?
Don't change the topic.
What is this chart for?
That's for the, that's for the Lakeside residential, that Jay worked.
I know.
Yeah.
Specifically, what is this? I know what this subject is.
Setback.
This is new, new construction.
No, no, no.
No.
This is for the proposed overlay.
Overlay, that's it, it's for the overlay district.
They would go to, instead of fifty feet in the front, twenty-five feet in the front setback. On the sides, it's twenty-five and the underlying two acre.
But if they're existing structures, these numbers are fixed, I mean, you.
Well, they're presently fixed, they're currently fixed. This was a proposed, it was just.
You know, Jay.
The existing structures are non-conforming with the current requirements. This table is intended to provide relief, further relief from those existing requirements.
So, like, right.
Like I said, I mean, the.
You still working with.
The numbers are what the numbers are, pre-existing, non, uh, non-conforming.
So if you look at, if you look at what Aaron or what Bill put together was, does these, you know, the sketches that Bill had in here, that allows them to work within their envelope, so.
Well, back to the rabbit hole, Mike, I'm, I'm hearing it, I think.
What does the table say?
Okay, I don't know if you, are you, to, to talk about not going down the rabbit hole, are you suggesting that, look, we already have current zoning there and that's the way it is, why are we fooling around? Is, what are you asking? Tell us.
We have this piece of paper and here's the chart with a bunch of numbers in it with no explanation. What does it mean?
It's the setbacks, it's what we're saying, it's new setbacks.
But.
For the future.
Future.
Possible.
It would go in this table, you'd put it in this table for an overlay.
Yes. So just for futures of structures.
Proposed, right.
Right, correct.
That's what. Oh, I'm trying to ask.
No, but, but existing houses could go up to those setbacks.
What, in what Jay, what Jay wrote in here, alterations, modifications, replacements of existing structures, okay? That's what Jay put it in there. So you would use, if you've got a small lot and you're in the Lakeside overlay and you wanna do an alteration or modification, you then could.
Have to stay within that.
You'd have to stay in, you'd have to stay, yes, you'd have to stay in.
These are more permissive.
Because you're already a small, you, you're never gonna fit the currents, that's all. And this, and that was the goal of that, was to give the relief and to say, here, we identified, you guys have small lots, we painted you purple, And to say, here, we identified, you guys have small lots, we painted you purple, you know, and this would give you the relief. Of, you know, if you wanted to put a deck on and stuff like that, you still put, you know, within your, still gonna get a bill permit, still gonna do all that thing. But you wouldn't have to go to the ZBA and take not, you know, three to four months.
And then one more clarification.
With them going to ZBA and wait, that's why ZBA is here, but.
Yeah, I don't either, actually. Let them fight it out case by case.
Because every case is extremely different, every single case.
Different, that's why you go to ZBA.
You know, we're suppo- surmising that we don't know who's got what view and whatever situation, or who's next to who, and it is a little, you know. I mean, there's so many variables involved that it's, like he said, you know, that it's just gonna turn it into a, just a mess.
I don't see anything good coming out of it, you know.
Ernie, just to clarify, did you ask me if I was gonna recuse myself? Cause all I did was abstain from a vote of authorizing town council to draft a warrant article for Lakeside Residential overlay.
I thought you recused yourself.
I did not.
I said on the record, then, let the record show that Tracy's recusing herself, like, cause you stepped off way from the table, I.
No, no, she she abstained.
Stained from that vote because then I was thinking about changing this instead.
Yep.
So I, I didn't recuse myself.
Okay.
For the record.
For the record, okay.
So.
So so do we wanna look at that, our current section and and update that?
I guess, so you still have the rights to do what you want with your property?
Oh, yeah, particularly like what I was thinking from a zoning standpoint, if we could. If you're trying to do something that would would help some folks by right and not clog up the ZBA, I don't know if they're clogged or otherwise. Letting them build to the underlying zoning setbacks is fine, not extending the nonconformity, but building within. Uh, within the setbacks that are existing, then you free up a whole bunch of folks potentially. From having to go because they are nonconforming set, frontage, nonconforming, we don't have depth in this town, but nonfrontage or foot, uh, footprint. That's, it might be, I was just thinking, it came tonight, I don't know, just an easy way to do it, I mean, it seems. Cause they don't have to get involved with the dimensional requirements, you just say.
Be in separate district, you would.
Right. It's still an overlay, but only in regards to waiving the frontage requirement and the square footage requirement, but everything else stays in place.
Yeah, substandard lot of record.
Right.
That's what it would be.
Okay, good.
Separate that from the construction portion, so you separate, that's a totally different bucket. So no waivers, there's no waivers. It is what it is, what it is.
Right, right, that's the setbacks, and if you can build within that, if you're eight feet, so what? Now you gotta go back to twenty-five, you can build by right, you know, on the sides.
Correct.
Right. Fifty from the front, if you're currently twenty from the front, too bad. You know, but at least we're giving relief for a lot of folks who could use it, and it still protects the neighbors.
I don't think there'd be one house that would fall.
Yeah.
That's right. They would make one up.
No.
I would still be formally increasing any, not increasing any nonconformity, is it not creating any new ones? So if you're at twenty, you hold that twenty line unless you make it bigger.
Also, you're in favor of letting them.
It's in the district.
How is he about?
He's on the frontage too.
How, how do you have frontage? Is he a frontage?
What?
Oh, he, he's, he's uh, right away to a start.
Yeah, right away. It's a way in existence.
Who, who's he? Who you talking about? Me?
They're looking for examples.
You're on track.
You'd be the only conforming person at the performing.
Well, what's funny is I actually own on both sides of a private way, so I actually own to the half of a private way, and there's nobody under.
Zero frontage, you have twenty cap frontage.
I have a, no, I have it on Southwest Main.
Oh, yeah, that's true. That's a good point, though, but we have no.
And you know who made me do that? The last building inspector. She said, make sure you keep your two hundred feet, and then I can, you can take across the.
Yeah, cause there's no width requirement.
Right, right.
In the town, which is clever.
I agree.
I I'm just, I'm, I guess I'm not in favor of opening it up to the micro management heights and this and that and stuff, but I think what Tracy's saying is is reasonable. But again, in the town of Natick, they used to do that, where Mike Conley said, if you're eight feet, you can continue. And then they said, no, fifty percent of that you could continue because people were extending an eight foot wall to thirty feet.
Right.
And going up two stories.
My opinion would be that's intensifying the existing.
Correct, correct. So all I'm saying is, stick within the footprints, and once you get into the fifteen thousand square foot lots, twelve thousand, ten thousand. You probably can use that.
Right.
But if you're at a five thousand, go up a story, I got neighbors all over the place.
No, I agree.
You know, they have two bedrooms downstairs, and they have no room. I said, put a second floor on, and those bedrooms become a family room or whatever, you know? No, seriously, if you got a two bedroom house, you're allowed five rooms, right? Two times two plus one, under Title V, right?
No, 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 five thousand square foot lot.
Huh?
No, 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 five thousand square foot lot.
Doesn't matter, it's whatever your septic is designed for, right?
No, no, Title V is one bedroom per ten thousand.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, then now that blew to me.
Well, there's a nitrogen credit, nitrogen area credit.
I'd rather get hungry too.
All right.
Let's get on with this, yeah.
So we'll review Jay's stuff, and Tracy, do you wanna take a look at that section that you wanna change? I guess, part of this is new, we'll see what, yeah, first time I've.
I mean, we have to go through this exercise to come up with something, it's not like we're gonna figure it out right away.
What did the sign by law?
What have we done now?
Yeah, and we had made a subcommittee.
We had meetings in between.
We had a subcommittee formed.
That took a lot of passion.
That was good.
I've heard, there's been some good discussions, we we get on to the solar one right now.
Let's call for some subs.
On the solar, um, the solar moratorium, subcommittee. Have to go to many town meeting, that's.
Ernie, move us along, move us along.
Move you along.
Okay.
Phil.
Town report.
Town report.
Did we do that?
You wanna go over on that?
How many, this and how many that we have.
No, it's in there for your review and approval, and I did submit it to Suzanne pending your approval.
Yeah, look at it, you did a lot of well.
Okay, but you have any?
Uh, Ken Baloo's on here.
Oh, is he?
Yep.
Oh, sorry Jake, sorry Jake, my apologies. Why should I apologize to Ken?
No, 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 actually, actually, no, you know what, Jake should be here with Ken.
Ken was on.
Because Ken was during this time.
Yeah.
So, so I would add Jake.
Yeah, but this is being submitted by.
Oh, okay, all right, sorry. I just saw Ken the other day, he was in good spirit.
Substitution.
This is the town hall, um, House Office.
Well, you need a motion, you need a vote, what do you need?
How come Jake's name's not on it?
Oh my goodness. Put it on.
Go, one, one sec.
Nothing.
Everybody's okay with it?
This looks quite a feat, I must say.
We going off medical?
Yeah, no, look.
We going off of medical?
How do you wanna take care of it? It's impossible.
We going off of medical?
Oh, what?
Reverse alcohol.
We need another. I think we need one more Michael on us.
So we need a motion to approve?
Yes, we do.
This is good. Motion to approve twenty nineteen annual report for the planning board of Douglas.
The other Mike, Mike G. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Okay, Bill, we'll get to go on there.
Good.
Minutes.
We'll get to Milo after this.
That's Mr. Mike.
What'd you think, Mike's on sound?
A few comments.
Yes.
Yeah, all right.
Do you vote?
I wasn't here.
Can I vote?
Do you vote, normally? This goes along with it.
Okay, um, most of the time, you know, the chairman is to, this chair, vote if there's a need for a, a tiebreaker.
Yes.
So.
When there's a tie.
For rubber tworls.
To the rubber tworls.
Did you go to New Hampshire today?
So, okay, most of the time you won't then.
Most of the time I won't.
The reason I ask is, in this, in the minutes, they.
I might say I once in a while, just cause I'm here, but I, yeah, I shouldn't, but, okay, go ahead.
In the minutes, at several occasions, uh, that they record the vote that was taken on a specific issue. And there's a number of I sixes there. So that would be an I six, not, if you're not voting, all of us. Five would be voting at six.
And I wasn't.
No.
But she weren't here, so she'd be I five for this night.
Correct. Agree. By right.
Honestly, I said I.
Unless he did, unless he did.
No, he says he didn't.
Unless he did at that moment.
I do some, just because I do it as habit, but.
So you wanna leave it at a sex?
You can, I'll say I voted that night.
Yeah.
Okay. But basically, yeah.
But normally, well, normally it would be I six.
Yeah, it would be I six, yeah.
Cause Tracy won't know.
But it's I six. It's A I voted that.
Page two.
Page two.
One, two, three, four, five. The fifth sat the sentence down. He, being Aaron, seals the solar by law, blah, 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 and limit the arch, question mark. What is the arch?
Arch scale, architect, uh, archetaphracton.
And limit the architectural scale for a small farm to.
Why don't you say it's, that, no, just not just sorry?
No, there's no arch, what the heck is an arch? Limit the.
That's why, that's why I asked you a question.
It's acre scale, acre.
Yes, limit the scale for a small farm to be no more than thirty kilowatts, which actually.
Yes.
There's two words here, do we delete them? Leave them there? Actually, there's the word and a question mark.
It's either acre scale or limit the scale.
Limit the scale, period, yeah.
Thank you.
Maybe you said, limit the acres, and then maybe you changed your mind to scale.
Acres or something, yeah.
I would say limit the scale.
Limit the scale.
All right, so modify that sentence.
Oh, wait, 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 back in the bylaw, there's a small solar and then a large.
Yes.
So we wanna say, state that there cannot be over ten kilowatts on a property, limit to a single, uh, because the solar power will. Limit the scale for a small solar array, not farm. Well, it could be farm, but solar.
Smaller solar farm.
Just the two of most of these bylaws that we were looking at.
So you don't, okay, so you don't want small farm, a small farm?
Small scale photovoltaic installation, the solar photovoltaic installation would inflate up to thirty kilowatts.
I'm talking about this.
I know you are, but that's what we were referencing.
All right, so, in addition to changing pat, uh, arc, arc to scale.
Just say a smaller solar.
Scale's already there, that's fine.
Ask, add a ray, scale for a small solar array would be fine, that's.
Add it where?
Instead of scale for a small farm, just put scale for a small solar array.
Is that what you said?
Yeah.
How do you know what you said?
Because it's, I was referencing this bylaw that we're looking at from another town.
Webster's, which he was using, nine and a half acres as a small farm.
Okay.
That's why.
Okay, and he probably did say small farm, right?
The small scales, large scale.
And since you're the farmer, you like using the word farm all the time?
He's assistant farmer.
Yeah, I'm an assistant farmer. Okay.
Okay, keep going, Mike.
Well, if you're gonna leave I six is okay, then that's all I have.
Okay.
So, we'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
To approve the meeting minutes as amended for January twenty eighth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Next way by Mike G., seconded by Aaron. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
At six eyes.
Abstain, and one exception, cause I wasn't here.
Oh, okay.
That's right.
They get five eyes and.
Yeah.
You weren't here, it's not that you recused yourself.
Right.
No, I thought, cause I thought when you said that.
It's okay.
You left, I thought, and I said, okay, let the record show Tracy recused herself, but maybe I was wrong.
Cause then I didn't know why I would have said that.
Yeah, I, I.
So I appreciate the, yeah.
Yeah, I I just thought you, you said you were, you were leaving a discussion, and I, I, okay, I said.
Must have been like last year or something, I knew that.
Okay, but we could have straightened out anyway, okay.
Good thing, because I didn't remember either, I was like, let me look at the meeting minutes. Um, thank you for the, um, report for town council, uh, how many hours do we got for the twenty-five hundred, do we know?
I don't know.
Cause it looks like we're using different.
It's a contract with, with the selectmen, okay?
Okay.
And it's a, a variety of boards that they service, um, for land use.
Yep.
So zoning, concom, planning, and other peripheral questions, um, that are land use related, so.
Okay, yeah, my only comment was, we keep saying like, we can't use town council. That's why I'm going backwards.
No, 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 that's not what we said. We, we said that if it's a specific task that's beyond the general scope of day to day questions. Like drafting a bylaw, that's over and above what they've contracted at.
Right, yeah, which, which.
Is it? Because they've, like, everything's been included, so I'm assuming that they're not over their hours for each month.
Included or forwarded an email from the town administrator regarding that whole question.
Yeah, it was in Matt's, it was in Matt's, uh, it was in the last packet. Um, Matt clarified and basically, cause we. You know, we didn't draft the article, and I think when Adam was here, he, he expressed that he had a lot of background on overlay districts.
Yeah, cause he was doing the presentation for C M R P C.
So, I think, and we looked and said, okay, it would be great to have him draft the article, which.
It, it, so, so basically, Matt, Matt's email said, um, you know, direction to town council comes from the board of selectmen.
For special tasks, basically, and that was considered a special task.
Correct.
Which we didn't know.
Okay, yeah, I just don't want it to get confused, like, we don't really ask, I don't think we ask for that much.
You're right.
Um, compared to other boards, maybe, and maybe that's a. Over exaggeration, I mean, there's D B A hearings.
Every time this board's ever requested town council, we had them in.
But there was a comment made saying like, we shouldn't be asking for him to draft it, and that we don't wanna tell.
Tax.
Yeah, tax town council. So I'm just trying to get a grasp on what, what the scope is that is over and above, or what is.
Oh, in the contract.
Considered in the contract, cause I see a lot of stuff, like, for, for town meeting, drafting things. So I just wanna clarify, like, a lot of this stuff is Z B A that I've gotten, right, from here.
So we're gonna be a responsible board, you see?
Right, and at what point are we asking to go above and beyond the normal scope? What is that threshold?
Yeah, if it was for.
No, it was like him coming in with general conversation, I think is all covered, but at what level does it come to the fact where the selectman or whoever has to forward that information on?
Well, well, what would happen is, they'd say, hey, this is beyond our contract, and then we'd take it from there. So with regard to that comment, though, um, the concern wasn't so much that, you know, we were directing them to do something. It was timing of drafting that overlay bylaw that I had concern with. Because I didn't get a read that the board had consensus on which direction to correct. So I thought it was premature in it, in that, but being premature, it probably wasn't the best use of town council's time. And it, it seems to be proving true with what I'm hearing tonight.
Had we, had we voted, you know, had we voted to go forward with drafting it as opposed to just asking town council to draft something of stuff so we can look at it?
Correct.
So when we did the signed by law subcommittee, we had town council, I was on it, he was on it. They were here, what, once a month, twice a month, on Wednesday nights, coming to talk with us?
Awesome.
So to ex, to be able to formulate the signed by law.
Because we were, we were definitely gonna change it, and they were also wanted to be involved to know how to write the correct language. So that when we were done, it was formally written out, cause we already as a committee said, this is what we're gonna do. So then they wrote it, and then we presented it here to the board to have a public hearing.
Yeah, I mean.
And that's why we did it that way.
Okay, all right, I got something to say.
Change it, that was a different deal. We were changing it, and then we set up the committee to generate that change.
Yeah.
And at the very end, he wrote it up, because he was involved in all of it, for full on presentation. And not go through it all over again, cause that was what the committee was all about.
What we did here was good enough to start with, because it gave Mark something to look at, the building inspector, so we had some things in front of him.
Right.
Not whether you wanted that illicit response or not, it was a response.
Right.
And I think we still don't know, nothing, there was like one instance when there was something that was rated that was additional. So I still don't know each point-three hours, like, what is, I guess, what's the harm in requesting, uh, advice or opinion from town council if it's not gonna be anything over the twenty-five hundred flat fee? Like, I guess that's kind of what I'm saying, like, we need some help, cause we're at an impasse. So why can't we request, if, if it's nothing extra, why can't we just request that? Why is there, like, this disagreement on what's over and above?
Look at it, look at it this way, they, they, and I haven't seen the agreement, okay? This is what I'm told, and I've been told from the previous administration. I don't know if the agreement's changed from when they did the signed by law to, to now. I don't know.
Right.
Um, and, and they define the scope of services, and there's base, for example, litigation is beyond the scope. So even if we don't utilize that twenty-five hundred, we're gonna pay extra for litigation.
Correct.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
And that's, that's.
So are you saying we don't know where we are at any given time, like, they catch the budget?
Right, per, per hour.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the selectmen's contract.
But we're, but we're, I'm receiving a comment saying we shouldn't ask town council's opinion, but I don't know, is that appropriate, or can, or do they only have, like, three hours this month, and they can do a little more for us to gain clarity on the legal side of what we're trying to do?
Was that, like, in my response to furthering the investigation on this bylaw?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, could be.
Well, I just was trying.
No, no drafting up the article.
Right, but, but the point was, I think we were at an impasse where there might be people on, we don't have, like you just said, the clear, like, the sign thing you just said. We were all, you guys were all clear about going forward on it with this board.
That was a definite deal. There was gonna be a signed by law, so.
Okay, I guess I was having that knee-jerk reaction that maybe, maybe that's not something that's gonna pass even on our board, to bring it to town meeting, so why do we go to town, you know, to the council for that? So that was just happening, you know, so.
The procedure is, we, we, if we need something from town council, we, we agree, we need something from town council, we ask Bill to, to contact town council, but Bill has to look within the scope of what the selectmen allow him to do, too, so.
And that, and that's how we've been doing that.
I'm getting a flavor of what the scope is, and I don't think it was out of the scope.
But it wasn't.
No.
I know, did anybody say it was?
Okay. Yes, that's what we're saying, above and beyond drafting a bylaw.
No, but.
That was the, that was the response back, oh, we can't have town council do this. We shouldn't have to do it, cause of the money, and that's what I asked.
But that's how you get.
What does other boards do? That's the only reason why I asked about this.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I. I don't know any of the legal aspects of what town council does, or what they don't do, and who we, I mean, I just know that we can't, we can't contact town council.
I'm saying the descriptions of these things.
You're right, you're right.
What?
You're right.
About what?
But what you're saying.
Yeah, you are right, yeah.
Yeah, you are right.
I just, if I never got, like, the question, like, if I never got a response that would make me question, whoa, how many hours are we actually using versus how many do we get as a lump sum flat fee? You know, I would be more conservative and say, oh, no, we, we should just do this ourselves.
I got, yeah, I know what you mean.
I don't, I don't wanna go over the twenty-five hundred.
No.
I didn't even think of it that way. I was just saying, if it wasn't something that we were gonna go down at all and did, then why ask them to do it?
But more information is better, especially cause this has been, like, going on for a million years.
I know, I put time into it. I drew things up, and I.
It's good to get a refreshing from our town council, what, you know, that could look like.
Not, not, not saying no.
Of course not. No, I, 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 no way, Tracy, I just never looked at it that way. I mean, if we ask to have town council's opinion on something, we told Bill, we could get. And beyond that, it's between Bill, the selectman, and town council. I, I just didn't get involved with, can I use ten minutes here?
And I wouldn't have questioned it either, until it was, it was brought to my touch, and we should be asking certain things.
Which, which I think was surprising that, because, you know, other towns use town councils and say, hey, can you draft an article? Cause I think we, we already had a framework.
A rough draft.
He sure is a rough draft.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, and for that to kind of be out of their scope, I think.
Oh, my God.
I was just projecting. The fact was that you go down the rabbit hole or whatever, and you go down, you go another month on this, and you get.
We needed to be stopped down the rabbit hole.
Yeah, one or the other. Let's, let's, we gotta decide, are we in favor of this period, or are we not in favor of this as a board before we go to keep going?
I know. We're still discussing it, but, you know.
I think, I think we've, we've seen a draft, you know what I mean, and.
That was all it was.
I mean, you made some, you made some comments tonight, so.
We have never come anywhere near using twenty-five hundred bucks.
We don't know.
It's a flat fee. Yeah, it's a little hours and it's a flat fee. We don't know how many hours we get for twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's our bucket.
Yeah, everybody puts.
Yeah, we gotta sign bylaws.
Let's, let's.
And the other thing, just before.
Far close. New business?